All right. Mr. Lindeberry, would you lead us in our implication tonight?
I have been following, thank you for the help being here today. Our members and our mayor just pray that to god damn decisions they make for our city.
Misty, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom was getting worried about you. All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting and start with a roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindeberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Deanna McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Anthony Foster.
Here.
Our city attorney and city clerk are both present. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any concerns, amendments, or motions concerning the adoption of the agenda?
I'll make a motion we accept it as a second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor say yes. Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from August 12th. Do we have any changes or motions concerning those?
I'll make a motion we approve those too.
Second.
If a motion is second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. In the public forum, we allow two minutes per speaker. All remarks need to be addressed to the council and mayor. We will not take any official action on public forum. Who would like to address the council tonight? Yes, sir. Come up and tell us who you are.
Good evening, my name is Joshua No Bear. I live at number six, number six more. I'm here tonight to ask the city council to review part of our municipal code, section, title seven, section 12, point two, section one, regarding the discharge of air guns, bows, crossbows, et cetera, within the city limits. I have personally looked into this matter a little bit since moving here and discovering that these were not allowed within the city limits. The discharge was not allowed within the city limits.
So let's stop there. I think there's a misconception there.
What's that?
That they're not allowed in the city limits.
They discharged them.
Yeah, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's an accurate reading. And I had the city attorney look at it as well. It looks to me like you can discharge BB guns, spring guns, air rifles, air guns, longbows, crossbows, so long, so long as the discharge does not cause or create the substantial likelihood of damage.
Yeah, I don't believe that's accurate. I actually emailed the chief Rogers, and he spoke with attorney prosecutor one of the two, and I got the complete opposite reaction.
Do you think the council have a different take on you?
Actually, I thought it, I thought it was like what he said, that you couldn't do it. For some reason, I, I was remembering the same thing you said.
Did you read it?
I didn't read it, but I thought I remember something.
Firearms is a separate section.
Yeah, firearms is totally separate section. You cannot discharge firearms.
But I thought you couldn't do the bows.
I sort of say, I believe we have an officer here write people tickets for target practicing with bows.
So, so they very well could have,
yeah.
if that discharge was going to cause damage or create the substantial likelihood of causing damage. So, yeah, we do have some leeway there, obviously. But otherwise, I feel like the ordinance, as it's written, is, is pretty open to, to the public to discharge BB guns or bows.
It's, it's not great. It is written in this language that I think a lot of ordinance it used to be, which is you flip the, sort of the intention and you say, "We are not not going to not prevent something," right? I mean, there's a lot of that in, in ordinance writing. We just, that's just how we started doing it. And it kind of carries through in laws like that. But it's, it's 7.12.01, yes?
Uh, 02.
Right, 01, 02, 03. So it's prohibited weapons is what the chapter is called. And, and it, as with all cities just about I've ever been in or worked for, discharge of firearms is prohibited in city limits, right?
Correct.
There is a little, there's a pond in the middle of Jacksonville, Arkansas, where the state senator got a law passed to allow discharge firearm around his pond. So he could shoot ducks when they came in. I swear to god, that's true. I was there, I was in the Capitol when that got passed. But besides that, so that's firearms, it's easy. Now, let's talk about these other things, right? These not, they're not firearms. So, it says it's unlawful. So we say unlawful, right? For any person to discharge or cause to be discharged. So it's unlawful discharge so as to cause damage or creates, it's unlawful to discharge to cause damage or create the likelihood of damage. So it's unlawful to discharge to cause damage or likely cause damage to real personal or public property. You'd think you have people in there too, rather than property, right? Any air gun, air rifle, spring gun, BB gun, air gun, longbow or crossbow, or such other instrument emitting dangerous projectiles within the city limits. So what's not, what's prohibited? It's unlawful to discharge and air rifle, spring gun, BB gun, air gun, longbow, crossbow, or such other instrument emitting dangerous projectiles, which I think is a potato gun, within the city limits. If you're doing it in a way that causes damage or creates the likelihood of causing damage, that's what's unlawful. And I would say, if you're in your garage and you've got hay bales in the back and you have that compound bow and there's a poor little deer on the hay bale that you've gotten and cut out with a little heart on it.
Taste it.
And you are right.
You meant to say, you meant to say taste.
I meant to say it. And, and you are firing inside and there's no chance that anybody's going to get hurt or anything's going to get damaged. And, and chief drives by, he's not even going to slow down, right? But if he sees two kids with their compound bows walking, you know, in front of the schoolyard, surrounded by windows, traffic, you know, kids, he's going to say, "Hey, kids, you know, you guys can't fire those in a way that's dangerous." So let's find a place for you to do that, sir.
So I think a bit of point of contention here is the first line in this, "Cause to be discharged or," so the discharge itself would be unlawful. And then the property damage is an addition to, like a further stipulation.
So you would read, if you read those two things, it means one of them doesn't need to be there, right? So if you're preventing discharge, you don't need to prevent discharge that causes damage. So what, what law says is if you read something in a way that makes part of a clause or a sentence, we presume that if it's like you're past it with the ordinance or the council, that it's right, it's presumed to be good. So if you take part of it and interpret it in a way that makes some of it useless, some of it superfluous, then we don't read it that way. We try to read it in a way that all the words make sense. And all the words make sense because right below that is a pure prohibition, right? A simple prohibition. The next, the next paragraph is, "It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge a pistol, rifle, gun, be it centerfire, rimfire, muzzleloading, powered weapon, within the city limits of West Fork."
Right, but those are completely separate distinctions. They're not.
Right, but we can read the whole ordinance and go, when this city council wants to outlaw something, they just say it. It's unlawful. When they want to outlaw the dangerous use of something, the reckless use, you can drive a car all day long, but you can't drive a car 90 miles an hour, right, down the street. You also can't drive a car, even in a speed limit, in a dangerous way. And if you drive in a dangerous way, you can still do a ticket, right? It's unlawful to drive a car in a dangerous way, but it's lawful to drive a car. I would say the same is, it's the same for, for BB guns and bows and the like. Now, could the city council write this more gracefully today? Sure, surely sure, they sure could, I think. But I, that's, that's whatever you.
Does the city council have any, any concern that it's unlawful to discharge BB guns in the city limits?
So you're saying you can?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, go get your BB gun.
What's your concern on this, sir?
So I personally, I would like to be in my backyard and use pneumatic pistols, rifles, et cetera, to shoot stationary targets, metal targets, aluminum cans, Red Bull cans, things like that. I just want to practice basic marksmanship.
Well, with the council's current, the way I'm seeing it, our interpretation of this ordinance and of the law, that is, that is legal and perfectly fine to do under that. Like you said, it's probably, like, like the attorney said, it's probably a little, written a little bit different now than what, than what we would currently write it. But I'm seeing it as it, it's not illegal to do that, to, to shoot your bow in the backyard. As long as you're doing it safely and you're not, it's not in a dangerous manner. Now, if for some reason it happens to become dangerous and you, you know, stick your arrow in the neighbor's yard, I mean, yeah, you're going to be subject to, to a, to a fine of some sort because you were obviously derelict in a dangerous manner.
Don't miss. Don't miss your target.
But I can see where, you know, in three years, all these people are retired to Hawaii, right? And so, and, and the chief has moved on to better things. So all new people here, and they may not hear it the same way. I understand that.
Well, so this ordinance, municipal code rather, it replaced a previous ordinance that was introduced in 1910. But there is no reason or anything that I was able to locate for this ordinance. It just came into being in 1980, whenever the municipal code was adopted. So I, I'm really just, I'm not trying to make a big fuss out of it. I would like it to be in a more clear language where it's something that's allowed. And I had actually sent to all of you an email.
I brought it with me.
Fantastic. Attached to that, there was a document that had the relevant statutes or codes from the top 10 largest population cities in Arkansas. Obviously, largest population cities in Arkansas don't really apply, you know, here. But I just went to go look for something that would be a good choice. And when I found Bentonville's was pretty appealing to me. It allows the discharge of a bow or air gun, 177 caliber or smaller at a stationary target with the property owner's permission. I think that would be a really good, kind of a path for the city council to take if, you know, you guys choose to make any alterations. But I would ask that it be 22 caliber or smaller, which is a common air rifle caliber. I mean, they're much larger.
Yeah, so I looked at some as well. And I wasn't opposed to Carlisle's city ordinance, which requires that, that they can only be operated by an adult and that a child has to have adult supervision. I'm not necessarily opposed to that. What I don't want to get into is the city taking all of the, all of the discretion of the police officer out of it. So, one, I don't want a kid accidentally discharging a BB gun and getting in severe trouble that follows him the rest of his life. But two, I don't want, I don't want somebody shooting in a, in a yard that's 50 feet long and, you know, poking holes in the neighbor's dog, right? So I like what we have because it gives, it gives the, the police department, who's going to be responding to any calls, some leeway to say, "Look, this is safe," or, "Hey, it's not safe, we need to do something else."
Okay.
That's my thoughts on it. But the council decided if they want to do a rewrite of it, and if so, we'll rewrite it.
Does Greenland have something to where if you have two or more acres, you can shoot a gun? Does anybody ever heard that?
I don't know.
It's called the Rich People and Farmers Act.
I don't think it's broken unless I don't fix it unless it's broken. I agree.
Well, and I looked at Fayetteville, Huntsville, Lincoln, Springville, and they're all much more restrictive than what ours says. So like if we were to be comparable to them, they're very clear that it's not allowed. It's not lawful. So, I mean, I think if we were to look at it and then look at comparable to cities, it, I don't know.
Sure, I mean, if you go to Rogers, they don't mention them at all.
Right, I was looking at small towns comparable to us because we're not, it's comparable to Rogers than we are to Greenland or Lincoln or Huntsville or, you know, so I was just looking at other small towns that were potentially like-minded.
And, and I was, I was looking really for, you know, why West Fork has it the way that it is. And I ran into a dead end. The municipal code was enacted 45 years ago and there's basically no paper trail from 1980 to now saying what has changed or why the things are the way they are. I've gone down to talk to Christie and I've talked to the Arkansas Municipal League themselves, trying to gather the information.
I think the mayor explained it pretty good. Yeah.
Okay, so, shoot.
All right, could I have that in, right?
Yeah.
Hey, sir, I'm shooting too, okay?
It's a concept of what, faith and.
Yeah, safe and.
Safe and responsible.
That's absolutely right. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public forum. Josh, thanks for taking the time to come and talk to us. And I know, I think you probably got a little bit aggravated. You didn't get responses right away on the email. But you kind of, you emailed in the middle of, of meetings. And so I've talked to a couple of the council members and know that they were researching things, but didn't necessarily want to respond until they'd had city attorney look at it and then time to research, research it themselves, so.
Yeah, I totally get it. I, I was ready with this stuff a month ago.
Yeah.
But I didn't want to jump on you guys. I wanted you to get an opportunity to look at yourself.
Yeah. All right. Next item, business reports. We'll start with the planning commission. Mr. Harnish.
Good evening. So we had a real simple meeting last one. It's just a lot split. It's at one on the corner of Centennial and Die Creek. So hopefully something goes in. It's mixed-use commercial, so who knows what gets built there. We don't have anything up on the agenda yet. And we're just waiting to get going with Juliette Ritchie, so. Same as always, pretty much.
Any questions for Walter?
You got a breather.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
So you guys just rewrote the zoning ordinance. When was the last time it was, it was updated in 54, I think?
Yeah, well, there were some updates in '07.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's where my packet was from when I got it.
Okay, okay. Next, the library report. Marie.
It's really hard to sneak in here. Um, so last month was our golden anniversary. It went really well. It was really great. We got Danielle Campbell coming. She's a local author who does local history. And that was really cool. We did like a giant bingo thing. We had a lot of kids and families come. It was a blast. And we still have the timeline up on the wall of the library and how it developed. So if you would like to stop by, Lindsay put that together and she did a fantastic job with it. So we're going to keep it up through September and then we haven't decided about October yet, so. Um, and also, we've started having a beginner Spanish class. So one of our local people used to teach English as a second language at NWAC. He came in and was like, "Well, I would love to do a Spanish class here if anyone was interested." So we did like a basic meeting greet. We had some homeschooling people in the community come and then also some adults. So we're splitting it. So we have 30 minutes for kids from 2:00 to 2:30 and then adults from 3:00 to 3:30. So sorry, even though it says only 2:00, 3:00 on your packet, that changed. And I didn't really have all the information when I had to turn it in. So we're excited about that. If we do find out that there is, I've heard from one person that some schoolchildren may also be interested. I wasn't sure if Spanish was getting offered at the school and so that's how it ended up there. But if we get more, then I'll see if there's a way that we can renegotiate the time. But yeah, that's all of our, our exciting stuff. West Fest was fun. I got to be there for the first part and then we're available there for the next part. I mean, it was a blast, it was really busy.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so that was a lot of fun.
Any questions for Marie? So if you guys haven't been by to see the timeline, you definitely need to, to make time to stop in and look at that. They've got some, some great photos, some stuff out of the observer.
We've got a picture of his daughter up there.
Yeah? I didn't even recognize you. Long time ago, but, but yeah, really neat. I think most everybody on the council remembers that the library started up here in the police department. And so there's some pictures of that. Very small cramped space. So, yeah, it's, it's really neat to, to go in there and look at that timeline and see how it's progressed.
Yeah, and I think we've expanded four or five times. Because I think they expanded when it was over here and then I would consider moving into the other building and expansion. And we've expanded that building twice now. So that's really impressive.
You know, something that has slipped my mind, I knew it, but it's slipped my mind. One of the photos shows the Fayetteville Bank.
Yeah.
It's a big article about the new post office opening in town. Don, you probably remember, I don't know where the old post office was.
Well, it was in the bank of Fayetteville for a while.
I'm saying that's, that's what they were.
It's here where the little old Opry is. It was in the east end of.
Oh, really? So I don't remember that.
You just walked in there and there was like one little tiny counter and 15 or 20 foxes, you know? But it wasn't much.
Yeah, I couldn't remember where it was before it went to the bank.
Right there.
So, anyway, Lindsay did a good job.
She did. I'll pass that along, though.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Next, police department. Chief Goggins.
Good evening. 337, sorry, 373, call for service, 33 reports, 77 citation, 88 warnings. I guess some, give some credit and some thanks. First off, credit to the guys. They've really stepped up on the West Fork, West Fest booth, put up a booth and they've got some, a little more razzle-dazzle, make it a little, look a little nicer. I hope we can kind of incrementally improve that a little bit as we go. The guys did a great job with that.
And gals.
What's that?
And gals.
And gals, guys and gals, yes. Also, proud of our guys who stepped up with the whole university thing. That went really well as far as our filling in there, backfilling, my shift officers helping out. So I think, glad it was not real, but it was a learning experience for everybody. I want to thank the school. The school just helped us get our new police IDs, get those all updated. And they just issued those out, except for the one that I forgot, not them. I forgot to send in. So it's nice to the school to help us out with that for various reasons. And also, we're able to get access to their facilities since we're using their IDs, not their IDs, their badge system to make our IDs. They can, officers can badge right into them and have access to the facility they need to. So it's an awesome thing and I really appreciate it.
Avoiding to see the stuff that happened at the university and shouldn't get in anything.
Yeah, that won't happen here, I hope. But we're still supposed to have an AAR for that. I haven't heard about it, but we'll, I'll try to get up there if I can or see one of my guys so we can learn from that. There's a lot of.
And that's a what?
What's that?
What was that?
There'll be a lot of learning, I think, from that.
At a.
AAR, I'm sorry, after-action review. Basically, a meeting after one of these critical incidents where we talk about, "Hey, what went well, what didn't, what can we learn?" So forbidden, we, and forbidden, we have some kind of critical incident in West Fork, we can learn from other peoples. I won't say mistakes, but what they learned from. Other than that, just a lot of little ongoing things. Knocking things off the list, polishing this up, working on this. Still trying, still trying to sell that cop car. Hopefully outfitted, get the most value out of it. So if you know an agency, we've got one coming to look at it tomorrow. And if not, we'll strip her down and, and sell it as a stripped-down car. But we're trying to, you know, get as much value back as we can and help up another agency that needs it with their ready-to-go-to-work car, so. But just little things we're knocking out here and there. That's it.
I think it's a comment that was really nice of him. He took Raider out and took a picture at the football game for the T-Mobile thing the school was doing to try to win the stuff for the school. So you, your officer was up there participating in it and got his dog down and everything. It was awesome.
Happy to help. Get him out there, get exercise.
Anything else for Chief Goggins?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Public Works, Mr. Harderson.
Well, I'm busy as usual. Our, the Rock Creek project is done, turned on. We have to tie the services over and then cut out the line and then clean up and we'll be done there. Zach and I have already worked through the as-built. So when we get all of that and our handsome checks, we will get our reimbursement from the state for that project. And I've already jumped on to Pleasant Street, the waterline project there, which is kind of tied to the 170 Bridge. We'll be starting in Carter Park and running up Pleasant Street to the hometown foods. With six-inch and fire protection up there, so, so I'm hoping that one starts in probably three weeks. Soon as we get done with that. Homestead, we are working on sodding some yards up there and some cleanup. We're having a little trouble with MyCo wrapping up their part. They, we gave them a laundry list of yards that they needed to clean up and they brought some five-gallon buckets of tops on, kicked them around and called them done. So we're trying to hold their feet to the fire and, and get that done. They tore some fence down and didn't put back correctly, so. We get calls daily from Homestead about stuff that they need to fix, so. So Jacqueline with McQuillan is, we're sending those to her and she is sending them on, so. I don't know, we'll probably have to have another walkthrough and would, I would most likely think we'll have Tulsa retainage to get that fixed, so.
And when I met with, with the, the POA down there, that's what I told them we were willing to do if, if it came to that.
Yeah.
We just wouldn't pay them until it was finished.
Yeah. We did, not me, but McQuillan missed a service in there or they picked up a clean-out at the back of a house that wasn't technically a clean-out. It was tied on to the new sewer. So the house at the corner of Oxon and Homestead was, was not tied in. So their sewer was overflowing. So we made an emergency tap up there. I think that was last week, wasn't it, Sam? Yeah, last week we were up there. Had to make an emergency sewer tap and get them tied on and back the service, so. So everybody's tied on the sewer now. We thought everybody was, but, but one got missed. Snowplow, nothing goes. He just emailed me today. It'll go towards the end of September to Tulsa for about a week to get outfitted for a snowplow. So we should have that this winter. There'll probably never snow again in West Fork. We'll take out blade leaves, whatever, we'll push whatever out of our shit. Don, our water loss will look a little funky for this last month and this month. We've been flushing quite a bit up there on Centennial. We had, we struggled to get that, that line to pass, so. It finally did. We had to stamp it three times. So, but it is passed and on. Other than that, it's been putting out little fires. The cottages at River Bend, they, they met with Crystal Corbett on their entrance and they were taking quite a bit of crystal. So we met again out there Monday and they're reworking some of the 170 turnoff stuff there, so. They're supposed to have some new plans back by Friday. But the clearing back there looks phenomenal. So those guys did a great job. Paul didn't get it off. They didn't push it all up in a big pile and burn it. They chipped it all up and hauled it out and bellyed them. So it, it looks really nice back there. I don't know if I have anything else. State aid paving. I have met with Steve Morgan. We should know in December. And that'll probably, if we get awarded that, it'll probably happen in '27, early '27, so.
And what all is that going to include?
It includes White Street, Pleasant, Park Street, School Street from McKnight all the way back around to Main by the fire station. It includes White Street, Pleasant, Park Street, School Street from McKnight all the way back around to Main by the fire station. And I think there's one more, but I can't remember. But yeah, those, those four were the big ones. Oh, McKee, McGee, parts of McGee, we're getting a little short section on there, so. So yeah, quite a bit of painting. That'll be huge.
Yeah, that will.
We have some work to do on Park Street, some drainage work before they'll pave it. And we have some manhole work on Pleasant to do before they'll pave it. All the manholes that we had refurbished are about three inches too high, so we have to cut all of them off and get them back down. Because they won't grind the concrete. So he said if they were asphalt, they would just grind around them and pave, but they won't touch the concrete. I think that's all we have.
Any questions for Isaac?
Just put a big thick layer of pavement in.
Yeah, six inches.
Be there for a long time?
That chews up $300,000 pretty quick.
Did, did you see that email from Chief Goggins?
I did not see it. I was going to tell them about it with American Union.
Okay. So Chief had measured the street in front of the library and up on Phillips and a couple of spots and sent it in. DOT has been responding quite well to him, I think. So they're, they're talking about cutting up there by Tower Street where that patch keeps coming up, doing an overlay there. They're going to fix some stuff at the library. So it looks like.
Try to fix it.
Try to fix it.
I was going to ask, we did some drain tile work down there after the Les Rogers truck hit that. But I think we're, we're just going to look at maybe just filling that entire ditch.
That one little short piece?
Well, not the short piece because their bio swell drains into that. We'll have to tie it in somehow. But the long piece going towards, I can't think of his name.
Tanner?
Tanner, going on towards Tanner, just filling that ditch in, putting drain tile and just filling it in.
That'd be nice.
Right now, it's, we struggle to keep it weedy. And I think Jimmy Forrest is weed eating it more often than we are, so.
So might, I don't remember who it is you've been communicating with.
It's the Arnot District, Area District Engineer, Chad. And he said the same thing.
Chad?
I don't remember.
I don't think it's Adams. I don't think that's who it is on that email, but.
I have his name.
But yeah, but we might reach out to him if we're going to look at Colbert and see if they'll, they'll help us.
Yeah.
Because that's what he suggested. He said, there's not a lot to work with here unless you just completely cover it like it is on the south side, the sidewalk and all that. Curve and gutter and all that. He said, I don't think we're going to do this entire thing, but.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you.
Works Director Harris.
All right. Yeah, we've just been doing the same thing, mowing and maintaining. We're on a lot of, continuing to work on a lot of off-season field projects that we don't have time to do while we're playing on them. But been working on those a lot, getting those in shape before the winter gets here. Working on, continuing to work on our disc golf improvements, which are going to be exciting when that happens. Not ready to, we're not, we don't have the perfect plan yet, but that'll be coming soon. But we're doing some clearing and getting ready for some of the changes. It'll, it'll increase the, the whole possibilities down there, change up some of the layout. But for the most part, it's going to, the main, the original layout will remain the same. But we're going to add some, some baskets to what's down there. So we're excited about that. Flag football program, finally found some coaches and got that organized when we started playing the games, flag games in a couple of weeks. Working on getting pricing on some, some larger projects for, to work into the budget next year, hopefully. Have to see how those come in. May have to do some picking and choosing, but I'm trying to get pricing, take to my parse committee and get some guidance there. And yeah, so that's, that's pretty much what we're going to work on. And like Isaac said, putting out fires and rat killing and just as things come up. That's about all I got. Still don't have a full-time employee, but I'm still, I'm still on my part timer. It's working out pretty good. So we're going to get by for a little bit.
Any questions for Chad?
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Next, Fire Department, Chief Howard.
Good evening. It was a wonderfully slow month. Slowest month we've had by a long shot all year. We only ran 78 calls this last month, only had six fires, so that was nice. Through that, though, we've had a busy time with Pancake Breakfast, West Fest, all of those things. Travis is currently at the National Fire Academy in Maryland, going through some fire marshal classes this week. We have two young firefighters in the fire academy that last for 10 weeks. So staying busy. All of the bunker gear that we ordered off of the grant, the matching grant that you all approved, it's all come in. I say all, almost all of it. The biggest majority of it has all come in. So we appreciate that, getting that out. So everyone has good new protective gear. That's about it for me, though. Pretty slow, pretty quiet.
Any questions for Chief Howard?
Thank you, everybody that came out to the Pancake Breakfast. Served about 450 people on Saturday morning, so it was good. Had a good time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for delivering at the local.
You're welcome.
Kristy is not here. She is on vacation. That ain't hardly right. Is that where she is? I didn't, I forgot to even ask where she is. So we do have our, our financials in front of you. Are there any questions concerning those? Streets Department looks terrible, or not Street, is it Streets? Streets, it looks terrible. A lot of that's going to come back when we get that reimbursement from the state, make that look a lot better. You guys laughing because I called Isaac out?
Yeah.
None of them look extremely good right now, but they're, they're not in terrible shape for this time of year. So sewer.
Sewer's hanging in there.
Sewer's hanging in there. It's looking good this year so far. And I would.
Yeah, we're loving the dry weather.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's certainly helping. The, the sales tax is still holding really steady at about up 10% year over year. So that's a good thing. And we've, we've added not quite 30 new homes in Smith Street. The last time I did the calculation, it comes out to about $1,200 per home, $1,600 per home per year in sales tax. If you kind of round some numbers into, to West Fork to get there. So that's always exciting. Anything else on that? No? Okay. Let's see, we don't have any ordinances on the agenda, so we don't need a procedural motion. We don't have any old business. We do have some new business. And the new business is to approve the inter-local agreement for the ambulance services. Has everyone had a chance to look at that? So there's been some changes to it. And what we changed, so the executive committee has been kind of struggling with a couple of things on the ambulance service. So for one, Washington County, back during COVID, Washington County had upped their subsidy to the ambulance service. And that never got brought back to the county. So the county was saying, hey, wait a minute, we're paying more than our fair share. What's going on here? Well, that's what it was. It was something that happened during COVID. So we kind of readdressed everything and decided to start looking at those subsidies based on population, based on size of the city, and based on how many runs are being made within that city. And so what we're going to see is every year that subsidy is going to change a little bit for each city, based on population that, that we're getting from regional planning. They make a projection. But also those cities that are seeing more calls ran in a year, the amount of subsidy they pay is going to go up, as it should. If West Fork isn't running as many calls in the, in the city, then we shouldn't be overpaying on that subsidy. So if you guys look at that, you'll notice that West Fork subsidy, I think it's shown, I don't think it is shown there. But West Fork subsidy is actually going down for 2026, or sorry, yeah, 2026. Our subsidy is going to go down as, as opposed to where it was in 2025. So that's, that's good news for us, but it is making it more equitable for all of the cities and the county who are, who are involved in paying subsidies on that. So any questions regarding that inter-local agreement? Motions?
Motion, second.
I'll second.
You got a motion and second to pass inter-local? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Any other, other business?
I would like to thank the city workers, street and parks for assisting in West Fest, helping us set up. Couldn't do it without them. We don't have that many volunteers, but we had a lot Thursday and Friday, which was awesome. And Sunday, tearing down. I appreciate it. It was bigger and better than it ever has been.
Yeah, it was a great turnout. Any other, other business? None?
Expect it all on you.
Okay. We'll close other business. We'll move into Mayor's comments. Thank you to John Collins and all the volunteers at West Fest. It was a great West Fest. Great parade, great turnout, ton of vendors.
Ton of vendors.
Yeah.
Actually, about seven too many.
Seven too many.
We made it work.
I didn't wear my West Fest shirt tonight, but I did buy three.
Then you must have got there early.
Fire Department did a great job. Pancake Breakfast, as always. So yeah, it was a great West Fest.
And several people that were there, a lot of the elect people and said that we have a wonderful community. They enjoyed it more than they did the fair, the clothesline fair, all that. The great festival, all of them. Said they, they loved our community.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
And we have Shire Fest coming up soon, right?
October 25th.
I put you on the spot with that.
That's why I know.
Okay. October 25th.
Yeah, so it'll be from 11 to 4. I know there'll be, last year I think there were like 500 to 800 people come through. Wow. So I was just going to ask you.
Yeah. I spoke to a guy today, I may have misspoke, but I told him that you guys had full hookups for other food trucks. He's looking for a spot, maybe in West Fork to put in a coffee shop. So I pointed him in your direction. I think you know him, but. Okay. Otherwise, budgets are coming along well. We started working on those. All the departments have turned in preliminary budgets. We've got a couple that are looking at their budgets, seeing if there's anything that maybe could come out. But all in all, the budgets are in really good shape. So that's exciting. Got some exciting changes coming through the budgeting process for 2026. And I think everybody has probably noticed, but work has began at cottages at River Bend. Isaac mentioned that. That place is cleaned out, that old house is gone. Isaac and I were talking about it, the fact that they chipped up all of that material and hauled it out of there. There was no burning or burying or anything else. So really happy with the way they've handled that thus far. And I think I mentioned, I'm not sure if I did or not, Isaac. At the pre-construction meeting, they were, they were basically saying about this time next year, they would have homes for sale and that. So to kind of give you guys a timeline, about, about one year is what they're expecting. And it's the same, the same builder that did Smith Street, that did 90% of Smith Street. The one whose houses are selling. And I think he has, he's got three lots left that hasn't been started the last time I was up there.
Two.
Down to two now. So that's, that's really coming along. Those houses are selling. I saw another one went under contract today. So that's filling up pretty quick. Happy about that. That's all I've got, John.
Hey, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.